All right, if everybody's ready to go, I've got 3 o'clock on three different devices, so it must be accurate. This time we'll call the April 24th, 2019 meeting of the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District Board to order. If the clerk would please call a roll.
Barnes.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Chaplin.
Here.
Cho.
Present.
Hanon.
Yeah.
Dial.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. We're gonna have one change to our agenda. We are going to table our boiler, our action item for the boiler replacement. I've got an issue with the contract on that that was just brought to my attention, so we're going to table that item, so we'll have a change in our agenda. With that, I'll ask for a review of the agenda and motion and a second for approval.
I move, we approve the agenda as amended.
It's been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda that's been as amended.
All in favor, please, Si. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of it here. Our next item is audience participation. Seeing none. We'll move on to our next item, which is approval of our board meeting minutes for the open session from March 27th, 2019. You should have those in your board packet. I'll ask for a motion, second on those.
Will they be approved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the board meeting minutes from March 27th, 2019, in the open session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item for approval is the board meeting minutes from March 22nd from the closed session, which have been reviewed by all of the board members. I'll ask for a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the board meeting minutes from March 22nd for a closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications, Carl.
I don't have any.
No communications, anything from the board? Any communications to any board members? No. Okay. Our next item is a customer satisfaction survey, which Autumn will be doing, and...
Yes, it'll be Autumn Solomon, our marketing manager, and she will be accompanied by -- make it sound like they're doing a duet, but Evan Alvarez, our planning and outreach coordinator, will be with her and doing part of the presentation. While they work their way up to the front table, I'll give you a little bit of background information on the customer satisfaction survey. This is something that we have historically done on a biennial basis, and for about 10 years, we had a local firm doing a phone survey for us. And then, in 2017, that firm, the owners of the firm retired, and they closed down the firm, so we didn't have access to them anymore. And even when that firm was still in business and they were doing these, they had been indicating for several surveys that they were having a harder and harder time doing the phone surveys. People have mobile phones now, and they don't have landlines, and the mobile phone numbers aren't published, or they're on do not call lists and that kind of thing, so it became harder and harder to do the survey that way. So in 2018, we connected with a new firm out of Iowa, and they go back to the old method, actually. We went old school and had a mail-in survey, and we got good results from that in terms of a return ratio. And so we have a very statistically relevant, thank you, sample size, and so that is what Autumn is going to be reporting on, and I believe she'll be pointing out that there are some differences in the data because of the form of the survey. I think that some people behave differently with different kinds of surveys, and so that shows up here. So with that, I will turn it over to Autumn and Evan.
Thank you, Carl. So, is it up on the screen? Okay. One moment, please. This is not working. So as Carl had just mentioned, that this survey was administered via email, telephone, and mail, which is quite different than what we've done in the past. It's important to consider this because people may be more inclined to provide different responses. If they have someone on the phone, they could feel pressured to answer a different way than if they have a pencil and paper in front of them. It's on. I'm too far away. I apologize. So differences in methodology would cause different answers, different results. We surveyed the Champaign-Urbana-Savoy area, included unincorporated areas, and our target was 600 residents. We came up with 624 residents surveyed for this with a 95% confidence and a precision of plus or minus 3.9%. We have removed the "don't know" responses from most of the graphs to reflect answers from users who are aware and familiar with MTD services, and I will touch on that more as we proceed through the presentation. So again, important variables to consider. The survey methodology was altered. That could affect comfort levels and attentiveness while they're taking the survey. The demographics have changed dramatically for survey responses in 2018, so for example, there were 36% more non-student participants in this last survey than in previous years, than in 2015, and there were 28% fewer respondents under the age of 35, and 24% more respondents were over the age of 50. There were also a number of socioeconomic samplings that were different from prior years, so it's really important to keep this in mind as a context for the results of the survey. Something else that could have influenced this is that there has been negative press coverage of the liability verdict in 2017 that could have had a negative impact on MTD's overall image. And another thing that is, it's not a hugely important one, but it is important to just remember it and keep it in the back of your mind, is that the survey came at a time during midterm elections, so this was following a very contentious presidential election. The public may have had polling fatigue from being asked their opinions repeatedly, and they may have had misplaced negative sentiment and just overall been in an overall negative mood when it came to polling, so that is important to bear in mind. I created a quick demographic snapshot. Since they were so important this year, I've added this from previous presentations. If you look at the number of non-students, there were 85% non-students surveyed in 2018, and in 2015, that was only 55%. So we're looking at a completely different makeup of respondents in this survey. It's good because we do have a more accurate picture, I believe, of the entire community and not so much of a focus on the students, but it will alter the overall results if we're comparing to previous years. The age differences are also pretty extreme. If you look at the over-50 age demographics, that has almost doubled essentially from 2015 to 2018. And then these children in the home, that's a marginal drop in respondents for people with children in the home, and that just may affect the number of school trips that can be accounted for in ridership data. Looking at more socioeconomic factors, there were 7% fewer renters, and if you look at the average household income, we've seen a large jump in six-figure salaries, so that is important to note. There's almost half as many respondents who had under $40,000 reported as their household And it appears that the vehicle and the driver's numbers are pretty similar to previous years with just marginal changes to the ability to drive. If we look at household ridership frequency, in this year, we have had fewer respondents indicating that they're regular riders or even occasional riders, where we've seen an almost doubling of the respondents who ride six or less times per year. So these are more of the quote-unquote "townies" that don't typically ride. They're not students. They're not people who are centralized to campus, so that is important to note as we move through the presentation. The overall image of MTD, we asked, "What is the image you have of MTD? Would you personally rate it excellent, good, fair, or poor?" And the respondents who have answered excellent or good was 80%, whereas in 2015, it was 90%. It is important to note that the poor rating is still pretty low, at 6%, so that's not as alarming as it sounds for a drop. When we asked respondents how they would rate the way MTD is surveying the area, 86% said excellent or good. This is 10% lower than the previous year. However, we also need to take into account that the demographics have changed on that. This one's also very interesting, and it's probably the most telling in terms of context of the entire survey. Aside from demographics, we asked, "Does anyone in your household ride MTD?" Only 49% of them said yes, whereas previous years were above 60%. So that informs us that the people taking the survey, they may not be familiar with our services, and so some of their answers may not be completely informed. On rating the MTD experience, when we account for the "don't knows," which have been removed, 99% of respondents said they were very satisfied or somewhat satisfied with the overall MTD experience. Now, from that, only 5.5% said that they did not know, so that was a small number of "don't know" respondents. So even with "don't knows" included, that is still a pretty good number. Just for context, off the top of my head, RTA, I believe, has an 85% customer satisfaction rating, so we're comparing very well to them. When we asked the likelihood of recommending MTD on a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 means very likely and 1 means not at all, the respondents answered 7 to 10, 80% of the time. And when it comes to continued ridership, "Do you plan to continue using MTD in the foreseeable future, at least in the next couple of years?" 95% said yes, whereas opposed to 83% previous year said yes. "How long have you or someone in your household been riding MTD?" Again, these have been adjusted for "don't knows," but that's marginal because of the nature of this question, so it's only 1% said "don't know." But the thing to look at here would be the number of people who have been riding for a long time. We've seen a drop of people who have been riding for three to five years, and so most of that can likely be accounted to the turnover rate in our community. We see that rapidly with young professionals and students as well. We asked riders to rate various services for MTD, and I have ranked them from the top ranking, excellent and good, and then the top, fair, poor answers. The reasonable cost to ride, 87% of respondents said that MTD provides a reasonable cost to ride. Friendliness and helpfulness of the driver ranked #2 with 86%, and cleanliness of our buses ranked 83%. In terms of fair and poor responses, the location of the bus shelters, understanding their routes and schedules, and safety concerns of the bus stop ranked in the top three of the fair/poor responses, and that will provide us a little bit of guidance moving forward on our strategies. We've done excellent with our customer service. When people were asked, "Have you ever been contacted or contacted MTD with a complaint?" 11% said yes, and of those, 27% said they were very satisfied with the way the complaint was handled, and 38% said somewhat satisfied. Only 11% said not very satisfied. We asked respondents, "What was the one thing most likely to cause you to continue to ride MTD more often?" And the top three answers were more frequent service with reduced waiting times at 30%, knowing the bus will be on time at 25%, and stops closer to home at 22%. The three answers below the line, at the bottom, were things that we don't really have control over, such as if their car is broken or they cannot drive and so forth. But the items above the line will inform our strategies moving forward on how we can make things better with service and also communicate to the public our services more The takeaways from this is that with a significant number of "don't know" responses, it could be for a number of reasons, whether it be less frequent ridership or changes in how the survey was given, they could simply be less comfortable answering that question and with a phone interview, they could, versus a written, they could say, "I don't know," or they are just less familiar with our service and they honestly do not know. From what I've seen, the highest number of "do not know" answers were in service-specific related questions, such as cleanliness of the bus and time of the bus. So those would be from people who, the "don't knows" would come from people who largely do not use our service on a regular basis. Another takeaway, I did not include this in the overall stats, but I love this stat. When it comes to IT expansion, 87% of residents have been to Illinois Terminal, and of those, 82% said the overall impression was excellent or good. And so even when 39% of our respondents said that they do not ride MTD on a regular basis and have familiarity with our bus service, a great deal of them had been to Illinois Terminal, and they have a favorable experience there. So we would like to capitalize on that more through more extensive branding and make sure the public knows that Illinois Terminal does belong to us and it is not, in fact, just an Antrak station. It is ours. Takeaways and strategies moving forward. In terms of communication, 32% of residents who had an opinion indicated that they get most of their news about MTD from the internet. 32% get it from a newspaper, and 17% get it from television. So that is going to inform us on how we're going to strategize communications moving forward. We're going to focus a lot on online and earned media and print media. When asked when they get most of their information about MTD routes, 46% said from our website, and 22% said from apps, while 16% get it from calling the MTD. Various changes that we've made or planned to make moving forward to address some of the issues in this survey. We've increased our staffing to expand services. We have operations support specialists, customer support specialists, and outreach coordinator Evan here, and so those will help us reach more people and improve our services. At MTD, we also have a customer-driven focus that continues to accelerate our performance in services. We're also promoting token transit to reduce boarding times and increase the ease of use. And in 2018, we redesigned the website to introduce a responsive, mobile-friendly website to make trip planning easier alongside real-time bus tracking, so these improvements can help to answer questions on timing and schedules and improve overall customer satisfaction. We will also be promoting more for our riders to utilize the MTD account so that they can receive customized alerts, such as reroutes and so forth. Moving forward, we would like to conduct more public services internally, such as rider preference and accessibility. Evan has done a great job of headlining that. We have a plan to do more, a travel training summit to work with local organizations to empower their staff and assist clients using MTD services, so we're in the planning process of doing that. We're outreach-ing to local organizations who would be interested in learning about how to train their clients to utilize MTD services to connect with their own services. So we're hoping to do that sometime this fall. We're also currently adjusting our policies on trades and sponsorships in a way to leverage our important community relationships that would benefit both the district and the community. So we've often given a lot of free advertising on our buses to organizations who need that, and in the future, we're moving forward, and we're still doing that, but we're asking to partner with them more so that we're getting some returns on that. One example is that we're potentially using our token transit to offer them discounted and promotional passes, so they would get some rides through token transit perhaps for their event, and we would get that translated into users of token transit and people who are potentially going to be using this application on a regular basis for passes. And lastly, we have a focus on expanding our outreach and messaging to extend beyond the campus community. This survey has informed us on a lot of aspects of residents outside of the campus community, and I think there's a lot of great takeaways that we can use to reach populations that maybe we have not reached out to enough of in the past. So I want to thank you for your time and ask if there's any questions or comments.
Any questions from the board for Autumn? Bruce?
Yes, I wondered if, looking at this, you could detect the effect of the EMCORE projects, which I think started after 2015, and gas price effect? I noticed a significant drop in the number of students surveyed and the number of renters, which I presume is the same effect, and that might be the EMCORE effect, but I don't know whether you can detect things like that from the survey.
There were no questions in the survey about EMCORE, unfortunately. I would have liked to see some responses on EMCORE to get some feedback on that, and I did not also see anything on gas prices. Again, this survey was done before my time. I came in January, and I'm happy to answer questions, but I do have a limit on my understanding as well.
Right. A question on gas pricing effect might be useful, too.
Absolutely.
Yes. And finally, I wonder if it would be feasible and practical to ask a question about the onboard audio advertising? And how that affects people? They like it, they don't like it?
Certainly, I will make a notation for all of those recommendations for our future surveys.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the board? Margaret first.
Did the survey give the respondents the opportunity to make their own suggestions as for kind of things they'd want the MTD to do, that they currently aren't doing or are doing better? I guess was there sort of a free write-in kind of part of it, so they could express their desires?
Yes, to my knowledge, there was an open-ended responses section. Again, I have to apologize that I came in very late to the game here, and I just got access to that survey in its raw form a couple of days ago, so I have not gone through the full 300 responses from the community, just from skimming it. I did notice there were comments on annexation and things of that nature, so I'd be happy to deliver a follow-up report after I analyze that data.
Well, as Chair of the Service Delivery Committee, and Matt is also on the committee, I think we'd like to know.
Absolutely.
At least have some kind of overall impression of the kind of comments you got.
Linda.
Well, I thought it was interesting, however, I don't think we can make any, I can't anyway, make any judgments about comparing 2018 to 2015 and saying, "Oh, this was a drop," or this was, because you have two, not totally different survey groups, but, you know, the one that was done previously, three-quarters of the people were under 50, whereas the one done last year, you know, there were, maybe half were under 50. So you had a lot of older demographics in this survey, and I think, you know, student or not student, I think some bus riding is for somebody able to get up and go to a bus stop, and then from a bus stop walk to work or whatever. And the other thing is, we surveyed people in the community that were not necessarily bus riders. I know that, I used to ride the bus quite a bit when I worked on campus. Now, one of my jobs, I live in southeastern Urbana, one of my jobs is in northwest Champaign at Interstate Research Park. Well, it's just harder to take the bus there, so I think depending on where you are in the community would depend on how convenient. So I would be interested if we did this same survey in another year. I think those comparisons are going to be a lot more valid. The other thing is, I guess this wasn't really a ridership, a survey of our ridership, but a survey of the community and what they thought about MTD? Okay. You know, those perceptions weren't too bad, but again, I would caution people to make too many comparisons between the surveys because it's a totally different group. Thanks.
Absolutely, I agree. It's actually on my agenda to reach out to the company that conducted this survey and see if they have cross tabs on specifically the age breakdowns, because I did not see that in the data folder that I received. I would be very interested to see how the comparisons are between the age groups and their responses to the rest of the survey.
Let me go. Anybody, other board members? Jim? Well, she's already gone once. We'll come back to her.
I don't want to slight Margaret.
It's all right. I will.
I was looking through here, Autumn. 624, how did they decide who to send things to? And how many did they send out? I mean, was that, maybe I'm missing something, it was not clear to me. 624 resident survey, 95% confidence, but they just arbitrarily picked people, or how? Who do they send this to?
I am not certain of that because I was not here for that. I don't know if Evan can speak with any confidence to that because he was not involved in that either, unfortunately.
I can try.
Yeah, Carl may.
Yeah, I'm not intimately familiar with it, but I can give you a general answer to it, that they, that firm purchases addresses from the post office, and then they do a random selection. I don't recall the number that they sent out, but it was in the thousands, several thousands that they sent out.
Is maybe 20% response? But, you know.
Yeah, I'm not going to try to guess on that number, but they sent out several thousand, and then they got a wave back, and then they, that didn't hit the 600 that was our set return rate, and so they sent more out, and then we got another wave returned, and that put us over the 600. So I don't know what the totals are, but that's generally the process that they went through.
And what was the cost? Do you have a number on that? What did it cost to do this?
I'm not going to be able to quote that either. I think it was in the neighborhood of...
Roughly speaking.
Roughly speaking, I think it was less than $20,000.
Yeah. And the other, I was just looking through here. I like the focus on expanding our outreach and messaging to extend beyond the campus community. To some extent, the campus, you have almost like a captive audience. I mean, they're going to take the bus usually, and often more than once, but it's tremendous if we can get that outreach going. I think that's who you're talking about, the penetration of the populations that are reaching out to. Is that who you're talking about? I forget your exact terminology, but you said populations that are underserved is not the right word, but people who have not been touched, if you will.
Yes, that's correct. I think traditionally, we focused on the campus community just because that is such a large portion of our ridership, and those are kind of the low-hanging fruit, and I do believe that we can do better and reach out to the rest of the community. I know that we have plans to do more outreach in the southwest of Champaign in particular.
Yeah, the previous surveys weren't geared to focus more on the students. It's just that more students responded to that survey method. So that's one of the quirky things, kind of relative to Linda's point, is that this is a very different survey methodology, and different people respond to this methodology than what responded to the previous methodology. And so students were very, I mean relatively speaking, they were more inclined to... And so students were very, I mean relatively speaking, they were more inclined to respond to a telephone survey. They get something in the mail. I, I know my son in college never even checked his mailbox in, in his dorm. So not that he's a representative sample of University of Illinois students, but maybe.
Antidoteally speaking.
Yeah. So it, it's possible that students just, they're just not responding to a mail survey because they don't care, they're not interested, or they might not have even known it was there. So some of that is just the result of a different methodology.
Yeah, no, and I think finally, just looking at nationally, the two big things for people are more frequent service and shorter ride time. You solve that problem, however that is, and you will expand tremendously your, your ridership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions from board over here? Anybody? Margaret.
One of the things I think you might consider for future surveys is to somehow clue in special data about the disabled people who ride the bus and sort of what their experience is. I assume that there's no way of sorting them out in this, this particular survey, but in the future, it might be interesting to, to sort of discover whether we're serving them as well as they think we should be.
Absolutely. I think that's a great point and we've already taken steps to, to do that. Evan here has crafted a wonderful survey. We call it our accessibility survey. And again, we had, we're working on doing a travel training program and so part of that is reaching out to local organizations and a large number of those organizations provide services to the ADA community. So we're going to hopefully work with them to get the survey out into their communities. Now, we're not paying a survey firm to do this. This is something that we're doing internally and when I say we, I mean Evan. But we're hoping to get responses on that and, and we're hoping to reply to their concerns as needed.
I, I guess what I would be concerned about is not necessarily our, say, paratransit service, but how the disabled people are satisfied with the regular fixed route service.
Margaret, if I may, remember, this is, this was a community survey. We do also have rider surveys and we generally have done those in intervening years, so we alternate between the two. This one was a community one. When we do the, when we do the rider surveys, that does have questions that are, I think, a little more oriented to what you're alluding to. So that, that specifically is talking about, okay, you're a rider and what do you think about these aspects of the service itself? Where much of this survey is, what do you think about MTD as an entity as opposed, although there, there are some service questions, much of it is just what do you think about MTD as an entity?
Yes, I, I believe that the surveys that we're coming up with for the accessibility survey will be addressing things such as, you know, do you have accessibility devices that you rely on and is it compatible with our service? Is there anything you'd like us to know to, you know, increase compatibility or to make it easier for you to utilize our services? Evan can speak to more confidence on that.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, through the accessibility survey, we are looking at capturing more of the whole travel process, both in terms of physically getting onto a vehicle, getting to a stop to catch a vehicle, how we are getting information and what things are breaking down in that process, how we get information from agencies that aren't MTD, so different community groups that might be helping you with your travel arrangements. So we're definitely excited about getting more information in that area.
Any other questions from the board from, for Autumn? So I've got a couple of things I want to ask about. So we don't know what the return rate was of our, the surveys that went out. We know there were thousands that went out and we got back six twenty-four.
Yeah, I certainly don't know the number off the top of my head, but we can get it, get access to that.
Sure, that's fine, that's, that's fine. I just anecdotally want to know that. On the complaints, so just on that particular section of your presentation, and by the way, thank you for putting this presentation together on information that you didn't generate. You did a great job and thank you for what you've done. On the complaint section, so in that it says we have, have you ever filed a complaint? Eleven percent of those people. So I'm assuming that those people, those 11% were of the six twenty-four were people that have used the service at some point. I would just assume unless they're just complaining in general or do we not?
It's both. It could be both. You could, you could be a member of the community and not a rider, but have a complaint and we accept those as well.
Sure, okay.
And investigate them.
So then, one of the things you mentioned was that 11% were not very satisfied, but 24% said that they were not at all satisfied. So that makes 35% of those people that have filed a complaint weren't satisfied with the results. So that sounds like a customer service thing. So my question for that, from that aspect is, do we ever do any follow-up with people that make complaints and ask them, were you satisfied, was your problem resolved? Were you satisfied with what happened? And is there, what would it take to satisfy? Is there anything like that that happens?
We don't, we don't have direct follow-up like that. I mean, we get pretty immediate answers to that type of question when, when we are responding to the initial complaint. So I, I'll just give you some anecdotal examples of why somebody might find themselves in, in that kind of category. Not that there aren't other reasons and, and sometimes it may be that we just haven't done the job that we would prefer to be doing. That, that can happen, but frequently, or I believe what, what most frequently would put somebody in that category is individual A calls up with a complaint, they tell us their version of the story and we'll pull the video on the vehicle and see that the actual events don't always line up with someone's perception. It's a very natural thing to happen. In general, people are not very good witnesses and especially if they're involved with the incident, their recall goes down and their perception becomes jaded. So we're looking at video evidence of something and so our response might not be exactly what they think it should be based on their memory of the, of the situation. Another reason we, we frequently will have someone not happy with the result of a complaint is because they, they might want to know, they frequently specifically want to know what happens to that driver as a result of their complaint. And we will not share that information, nor should we. And so many people are not satisfied with that and they won't be satisfied and we can't satisfy them in that regard. So there are circumstances like that and we know that right away. I mean, when we tell them we can't share that information with them, they let us know how they feel about that.
You get an immediate reaction.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. That's a great answer. Then one more question, so strategies moving forward, we're talking about working with local organizations to empower their staff to assist clients. So that would be someone like maybe DSC or someone along those lines?
Yes, exactly.
Some of those organizations that are in the community that we want to work with and.
Yes.
Provide them services.
And that's not limited to the ADA community.
Sure.
We're also looking at various providers throughout the whole community, whether it's Salt and Light, OSS, Carl, across the board.
Awesome, okay. Thank you, again, thank you very much for your presentation. Any other questions from the board for Autumn on her portion of this? Then we'll have Evan move forward. Thanks.
Alrighty, so this is the second portion, the results from our rider preferences survey. Of course, an immediate question is probably, okay, then what did we just see? These are two different surveys. The community survey, we started last spring and it's a longstanding practice we've done for years and years. It's very formal, it's more statistically significant, that's one of the goals of that. We deliberately look at the whole community, writers and non-writers, and as y'all have alluded to, there's that, kind of that focus on community relations, perception, how we are interacting with the larger community outside of just our ridership. This was done in the aftermath of that, so early this year. And it's a newer thing that we would like to be doing more of. This is less formal and it's smaller scale and a little bit more targeted. So in this instance, we really were just looking at writers. Or in the case of the accessibility survey that Autumn mentioned, we are really just looking at passengers with disabilities. And the focus here is much more on operational and functional outcomes, because whenever we would get these other results and they would come back to my desk in the operations department, I would see approval numbers and think, okay, but great, we're, like, what are we almost doing, what are we not quite doing? So that's kind of what we were looking to capture with this survey. All in all, we got 377 total responses. We shared it from, and in this case, when I say we, I mean Autumn, predominantly through Facebook, through Reddit. We got picked up by Smile Politely, which was incredible. And just the, one of the first questions that we did ask for the sake of being able to put the responses into discrete buckets is, do you use predominantly routes serving the campus area or the larger community or a little bit of both? Chiefly because, right, your, your relationship with the service is going to be different if you're using predominantly 10-minute service for shorter trips than less frequent service for longer trips. So what did we learn? About 50% of respondents do ride every day. Another 20% do three or four times a week. So you have about 70% of respondents traveling multiple times a week. Transfers are always something that we wonder about. We have a, we get a flat number of transfers every day that, that went through and we can pull those in different ways, but it's always hard to tell, do you have a smaller group of super transfers? Do you have, does everyone do it sometimes? So here you can see about 30% of people transfer multiple times a week if you look at those left two columns and about half of people never do. And when we asked how people prepared for their trip, this is something that I was especially curious about. As a regular transit user, I normally take the same few trips over and over again. Like, I know I can be outside my apartment at 6:55 in the morning and my bus is going to be there and I don't really look that up anymore. So I kind of wanted to understand how our passengers have trips like that and how often they had to actively go and find information. So you can see about 60 do use the trip planner, the schedule book, or they'll call us to help plan their trips. But about 30% do those trips from memory, which I think is good to know because I know when I'm in those circumstances, before I worked at MTD, there were times where I would miss information because I thought I already knew everything. Some things never change. But one of the major themes that we were looking at with this survey was frequency versus schedule adherence, because we do have operational issues where a bus is running late and it would be really easy to fix if we had one fewer trip. Or people want more frequency, but that's something we would have trouble doing with schedule adherence. So when asked, 55% of passengers said that frequency and on-time performance were both equally important to them. When asked, but when they were pressed, 70% said they would prefer a service that had more trips, even if it had less consistent on-time performance. We did a little bit of a deeper dive into transferring to figure out how people feel about it and how it affects their trips. And you can see here, our passengers were about 50, 50 split in terms of whether you would have a longer trip that didn't require you to change seats or whether you'd be okay transferring if it meant you'd get to your destination sooner. So that was an interesting thing to learn. And you can see here, we asked the passengers to rank which of four factors were more important to them? The length of their trip, the frequency of trips, on-time performance, or the ability to make a trip without a transfer? And consistently, not having to transfer was a pretty low priority. People were willing to do that if it meant that the other three factors were proportionally However, you're probably unsurprised to hear that there were some differences there. People who said they predominantly used the campus service are much more likely to ride every day and only a third is likely to transfer. So you do have those shorter trips on that more frequent service. They love frequency. But when asked how long you could wait for a second bus before you would say that a transfer wasn't working for you, or how long you would wait for a second bus if you missed your first one, people who use the campus service were much more willing to just make other arrangements if things didn't go great immediately. Where in the surrounding community, almost half of the people who responded rode less than once a week and they were much more likely to transfer every day or multiple times a week of those who were riding that often. There was a much higher value on the bus being on time, which I think makes sense. If a bus is only going to come every 30 minutes, then you know, you can take that accountability as long as you know it's going to do what you expect it to. People in the surrounding community were more likely to be patient and wait for a second bus or wait longer for a transfer, but community members were much more concerned with trip length, which kind of makes sense. So I live in Champaign, work at our administrative office in East Urbana. For me to get to work by bus takes about 50 minutes and I'm very aware of how much time I could be sleeping when I'm doing that. So that's something that makes sense when you're traveling a larger distance like Linda mentioned, getting to North Champaign. We did have an open response question, just a general, what else would you like for us to know? And those fell into three basic issues. There were service recommendations. People said, hey, when is the orange going to start running on weekends? Hey, we need later Sunday service. And a lot of those were things that we're aware of and, you know, it's normally just financial constraints that are happening there. But kind of hearing the specific ideas that people had and how frequently they were coming up, that's still good information to have, even if it's not something that's immediately actionable. There were accessibility concerns, just recurring themes of technology being available to people with lower vision, people with disabilities. And a lot of accessibility concerns were, you know, there's a ditch around my stop, things like that. So a lot of them were smaller things that would be fixed on a case-by-case basis. But as Autumn mentioned, we're already taking very deliberate, very substantial steps to interact more with a community of people with disabilities to address those needs head-on and kind of start a more meaningful dialogue as to how we can be serving the whole community better. And finally, there were tech issues and a lot of misunderstandings. So until the Route Match Safe Rides app, we did not have an app of our own, but people will still call in and complain and say, hey, your app doesn't work, hey, your app gave me the wrong time. And regardless of whether or not it's actually our app, if people perceive it as being such, then that's something that's good for us to know and for us to be able to respond Finally, these were some of our other open responses and just to end on a slightly schmaltzy note, we had a lot of really positive feedback from the community, a lot of people just saying really, really lovely things about the service and what we provide for them. And we certainly learn a lot from the complaints, from the feedback of what we could be doing better. But it was also extremely gratifying to have this question and to hear that people did feel that we were meaningfully promoting accessibility in the community, which is something we deeply love doing. So seeing this was great, especially if you look on the top right, the I commute by bicycle. So please continue to support the local bicycle community by providing bike storage and training drivers to respect cyclists on the roads and thank you for all that you do. Just, that was something that's nice to hear, that, you know, we're interacting well with other people on the street, they feel like we're doing so safely. I was very, very pleased to hear that. And that is the end of the rider preference survey.
Thanks, Evan. Any questions from the board for Evan at this point? Linda?
Oh, I, I agree. We have a great service and when I worked on campus, yeah, it was wonderful. And I still take it sometimes, but anyway, the, the part about making other arrangements if the bus wasn't on time, do you know what they did? I mean, what kinds of things do people do if they can't get the bus?
No, that's an excellent question and it's something that I did not follow up with in the survey. I know personally, as a student, I had classes in South Campus and if I could catch a bus in South Campus to go home, like the Blue or the Brown, which went closer to my apartment, then that was great. But if I couldn't, then I would just walk to the Union because I knew something would be coming more frequently.
I guess I was wondering if you hear any more about Lyft or Uber? I know at one point, we had had discussions about some of these ride-share services starting to take more traffic or create more traffic.
No, and in the scope of this survey, at least in the open responses where people had the ability to elaborate there, we didn't hear as much about ride-sharing services in that way.
Anything else from the board for Evan? Thank you both for your work on these things. We certainly appreciate it. It's great to have this. It's great to have this information. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move into the managing directors' report. Carl?
Thank you. Before I start, I'd like to thank both Evan and Autumn. Evan is in a new role where he's taking on more of an outreach aspect and really helping us to do a better job there, and he's off to a great start. And as you mentioned, Chair, Mr. Chair, Autumn is still brand-new. She still has that new employee smell about her. And this was a deep dive for her to get into this, not only with the district, but also the industry. She's new to the industry, so she did a great job, I thought.
She did a good job.
All right. Moving on to our March data, ridership was down in March, two point four percent. That's a fairly slight shave, and we did start with EMCOR reroutes in March, but just at the very tail end of it. And then we did have less or fewer weekdays, so that also had an impact as well. Moving on to revenue, our revenue was two point three percent below March of 2018, but the year-to-date operating revenue is two point four, is also two point four percent below last year. And our expenses, the operating expenses, were four point six percent below March of 2018, and the year-to-date operating expenses are two percent above 2018, so we're doing well there. And our year-to-date operating revenues relative to the budget are five hundred and forty thousand dollars above budget, and our operating expenses are three point three million dollars under budget. And if you see my notes there, I'm not going to reiterate that, but if you have any questions about the Safe Rides Connect system or the audit coming up on our MTD 2071 system, we can address that. And then I am going to briefly, before I say, well, we can take questions, I'm going to turn this over to Jane Sullivan, who is our Grants and Governmental Affairs Director, and she's got a quick announcement.
So I'm going to ask, Margaret, do you want to make a comment on the 2071?
I don't have a lot of comments. It's obvious that, well, because also Jim was at the meeting, he may have some thinking he wants to say as well. Now, as usual, these people are doing a very impressive amount of work. We're learning a lot of things about what's going on and also about how we can improve our sustainability and some of the other work that's being done. I was very pleased with how the whole thing went.
Jim, anything you want to comment on that?
I said, I would echo. I thought it was a very informative, valuable meeting, and also, in an interaction like that, you have a much greater understanding and appreciation of staff, because here, it's much more detached. So I appreciated that, and I felt like I got to know several people, a number of the people at the meeting. So I was very pleased, as Margaret, to be part of that and have an understanding of the process and why it was done.
Thank you. Thank you both for your participation in that. Jane?
I wanted to share with the board that tomorrow is Get On Board Day, which is a national advocacy day for our industry. There are celebrations all over the country, just supporting public transit, advocating for public transit. And here in Champaign-Urbana, we are celebrating in kind of a fun, cool way. We've built a photo booth that resembles a bus, and it will be at Illinois Terminal in the morning until eleven, and it will then move to the quad until about 3:00 PM. And so we're inviting the community, and we're inviting you all to just stop by and take a picture. We're hoping that these pictures will kind of spread on social media. We have a fun hashtag, and we're encouraging people to tag their representatives and just kind of raise some awareness. So Carl has or is sending an email to you all with the details, but we'll be there, so come by and see us.
Super. Thank you. Such great information.
We'll be at Illinois Terminal from 7:30 to 11:00, and then on the U of I quad from about noon to 3:00. So Fred, you can stop by on your walk to work from the parking lot? Yeah.
He just RSVP'd.
He's in. Carl, you have anything else to report on? Are you all pretty well buttoned up?
With that, I'll just take any questions that you might have.
Questions on Carl's report or anything in your packet exclusive of the boiler information? Jim?
Just a quick question. I was just going over the numbers. Particularly in Illinois Terminal, it seemed like there was a couple of gaps there. I just was curious what the basis, operating revenue doubled, and operation expenses were almost nil, and then they went up quite a bit. Anything special happen, or am I misreading that, or is that?
No, that, excuse me, what you're referring to, the...
I didn't cite, I should have cited.
Yeah, you're noting that the March numbers are very different from the February numbers, right? Right? So the February numbers, I, that, it was, it appeared to be down in February primarily because we had, I believe, I'm giving you a little bit of a shooting-from-the-hip answer here, but I believe it primarily is because of a balancing of the revenue. We did lose some revenue beginning in March because we lost fasteners as a tenant in the building at Illinois Terminal, so that has reduced revenue. They consolidated their operations into the facility that they have in Urbana. But I think primarily, you're just seeing a balancing from an accrual perspective on revenues, and then that reduction in revenue with fasteners.
Mr. Chair, this is Michelle, if I could join in on that also, Finance Director.
Go ahead.
If you recall from the meeting in February, or about the February numbers, we had a workers' comp line that we have been accruing expenses into, so it was showing up as expense. But then we found out that that case had been finalized, so we had to take that expense back out because it's not actually going to be paid out. And so in February, that caused a credit amount to the workers' comp expense line of about sixty-one thousand. And so that is why expense dropped so significantly in February. And because the expense dropped significantly, the revenue did also, since we get sixty-five percent of the expense back in revenue. So here in March, we're back to a normal month with that unique accrual adjustment out of the way.
Yeah, I was thinking you'd explained something last month about there was an issue with that, and part of it was the state funding. So thank you for bringing that forward. Any other questions for Carl on the board packet? All right. Well, that is our last item for today, since we're dropping the other items. So our next meeting, next regularly scheduled meeting, will be Wednesday, May 29th, at 3:00, right here in the Champaign City Council chambers. Linda?
So the boiler can wait a month?
Looks like it's going to have to.
The boiler is going to have to wait a month, and that means that we'll probably have to be doing a, well, I'm going to have to do some adjustments to the budget that I'm just about ready to prepare for you, because I think that's going to push it into next fiscal year as well, or at least a part of it, and I hadn't planned on that. So this was late-breaking news that we just got right about a minute before this meeting started, that we may have a problem with one of the bids, and so I'm not even 100% sure at this point that there is a problem, but rather than pushing it through and then there being a problem, we just, we'll put a pin in it, and we'll deal with it next month, and we'll have more information for you then.
Very good. With that, we'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
It's been moved.
And it's been seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a great day.